Okay, let's call the meeting to order. It is six o'clock by at least one of these clocks in this building. I'm gonna roll call here and just let me know that you're here, board members. Larry?
Yep.
Bill?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Bob? Yes. Welcome to everyone. Please stand and join me as we say the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
I can't hear you breathe.
Okay, so if you've got your speaker on, I would request you to turn it down if you've got other activity in order for us to focus on our meeting. The agenda, although brief, is still full. And I will look for a motion from someone to approve the agenda as shown.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as shown, Katie.
Katie on the approval?
I'll second.
Larry on the second? Any other discussion? A yes vote would mean the approval of the agenda. Bob, yes. Brenda?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Passes by a six zero vote. Schedule presenters. Discussion on future board meetings held onsite with a Zoom link option. Jeff, I would guess this is you.
Yeah, I wanted to just take a few minutes to talk a little bit about where we are headed at moving forward with the beginning of school here and see if the board has any interest in coming back in person to have meetings onsite. The caveat to that is, is that the boardroom only has room for 12 per the 50% rule. And obviously, we would have to be masked up. And so, at this point, I kind of want to get some sort of a direction, I guess. And it doesn't have to be an official motion or anything because we can certainly do that once we set up the meeting again. But we would have to still provide a Zoom link option both for board members and for community members because obviously, we can't host that many people inside.
Wouldn't, could we have it in a different room, like in the media or the library somewhere?
We'd have to look at the numbers. That could be a possibility if that warrants it. Again, we can certainly look at the numbers to see what would be an appropriate room if the board would want to do that.
Anyone else?
I guess I would be more comfortable if we had more room to space out, even if, even if it fits 12, that's still not giving us six feet from each other.
Yeah, I would prefer a larger room too, if we were to be in person.
So would you prefer a larger room versus what we're doing at this point in time?
I'm, I'm fine to continue doing it this way. It works.
Is that, is that the question at hand, Jeff?
Yeah, I guess I wanted just a little bit of direction, get a feel where, where board members, you know, we can certainly look at having it in the media center with more spacing available in between everybody. We would have to also be masking up and is that going to cause sound problems? We would have to still be on Zoom, obviously, but with each board member, even though they're in person, wouldn't be able to be on Zoom because it would cause feedback issues. So you would have to have probably one person via Zoom and then start videotaping like we did previously.
Larry, what do you think?
I want to go back to in person, but I understand we have to offer Zoom. So if we go back, I'm good with either room. But yeah, if we're gonna have people come, we should probably have a bigger room so we can accommodate.
We may even be looking at auditorium.
Well, I think what we come into issue with is the ability to hear one another with the mask on. Though we've had some meetings in person with the mask on and a group says four or five and, you know, you do have an issue there. So I think as you start spreading people out, it's a lot more difficult for everyone to hear.
We could see what we could do with microphones and maybe give it one meeting to where we could try it, see how the sound is. If you want to go that way, I can certainly set that up and at least attempt it to try to get some normalcy back if that sounds kind of good to everybody as a consensus, I guess.
Yeah, it doesn't really seem like we have a consensus, but if everybody wants to give it a shot, if we go to a next meeting, that would be somewhere in our building here with microphones. Would you be okay with that group?
I would be okay with coming in person with, even though we had the mask. The only thing, I also agree with Bill in saying that, I wonder how, I would be willing to give it a shot and see how well it is to have other people who have to come in on Zoom because of the, you know, numbers and everything to be able to attend. How well they'll be able to understand us and, and be able to read.
When processing plants were shut down, a crop examiner says farmers aren't sure how much China will buy this fall or what the export market looks like.
President Trump is denying that he's done anything to slow mail delivery, but the debate over more.
I think Kimberly has got a farm market report on.
Please mute.
Congress back from their August recess. House Speaker Nancy Pelosi cutting recess short for House members.
Thank you.
Okay. If we're talking about upcoming meeting, does that mean next Monday's meeting or further into the future? Just because.
We can certainly wait until September if you want to.
Because I'm gonna be, I mean, I'm gonna be out of town on Monday, but I was still planning on joining via Zoom. So, I mean, whatever you decide is fine, but next Monday, I won't be able to be there in person.
Yeah, same, same here.
Well, let's zoom for the next meeting. I would feel more comfortable if you were all in attendance somehow, and then we can set this up for September, if you're okay with that.
That sounds good.
Yeah, I think that makes more sense.
Everyone good? So we're not really voting on it, but it seems like the, the majority would favor just delaying at one more meeting and then back at it in some type of format. And that might even give Jeff an opportunity to look into more in depth what could be a possibility for us.
Yeah, especially on the technical end of it. I'm gonna have to make sure that we're not having any feedback or anything, but yeah, the, the extra time would be greatly appreciated.
Okay. So we'll zoom at least one more meeting. Okay, next is public input. Due to private data, see private concerns, a speaker may not address criticism toward an individual district employee during public input. Individual complaints should be handled privately with the administration and/or superintendent. Comments from visitors must be informational in nature and may not exceed three minutes per issue. The board cannot engage in discussion or debate in those three minutes, but will take information and find answers if that's appropriate. As part of board protocol, it is unacceptable for any speaker to slander or engage in character assassinations. So some of the issues that we may be dealing with in front of us this evening may answer some public input questions, but actually, how would we know? So if we have multiple folks talking about the same circumstance, we would probably limit some of those conversations just because it becomes redundant to us. But we in no way want to shortchange anybody in their conversation. So at this time, does anyone in the public wish to speak to the board concerning District 252 issues? Okay, we move on to action items. Under new business, consideration to approve a one-year leave of absence request in accordance with teacher's master agreement, Article 10, Section 12, Other Leaves of Absence. And there's a reference number for you under the statutes.
Yes, this leave involves Joy Sesker and it would be a one-year leave of absence and I'm recommending approval for this.
Okay.
I'll make a move to approve that.
Brenda on the motion?
I'll second.
Bill on the second? Other discussion? Okay, a yes vote would be for approval of this leave of absence for this teacher. Bob, yes. Brenda?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Okay, that passes by a six zero vote. Consideration to approve and hire a 1.0 FTE elementary long-term sub teacher for 2021.
Yes, this would be the approval for hiring of the long-term sub for Joy's position.
Have we got a long-term sub or is this just putting it out there?
This is just to, well, to approve and hire. We went through the interview process today and so I don't have a name in front of me yet unless Jennifer has somebody for me.
Okay. So looking for a motion.
To approve to hire it, yes.
Okay, looking for a motion to approve and hire. Who's that, Bill?
Bill.
Okay, second. Thank you, Katie. We have a motion to second. Any other discussion? A yes vote would be to approve and hire a 1.0 long-term sub. Larry?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Bob, yes. A six zero vote. Okay, consideration to approve resolution regarding the adoption of a based learning model for the 2021 school year and other COVID-related matters. Jeff, you can start this conversation for us.
Yes, this past week, we had our, I am calling it the COVID Advisory Committee instead of the Incident Command for a little bit softer touch on the, on the, on the advisory committee that was set up during the last board meeting. But we met last week and it was pretty close to three hours during that time, discussed and looked at different data around this issue. And the task of the group in the end was to bring a recommendation to the board. And in that recommendation, down here in the resolution, is that we are recommending that the elementary start off in-person and the middle school, high school start off in the hybrid scenario. Now, obviously, this is a situation that can be in flex throughout the year. And so I think the board needs to understand that and as part of the resolution, I'm asking that the board turn over those powers to the committee in conjunction with the superintendent and the board chair to be able to move in and out of our models whenever deemed agreed by that committee, the superintendent and the board chair. And this will allow us to be a little bit more efficient in what we do because if not, then we will need to convene board meetings each time we want to move in and out of scenarios.
What I would ask is that I'm gonna ask for them input from other advisory committee people, and I'm probably gonna put a couple on the spot that maybe not, didn't expect to speak. But what I would like to be able to do is call on people and if board members have any particular requests or questions for any of these particular people, this would be a good time so that we don't keep reverting back to one, a speaker that may have fulfilled their, their advice a while before. So Jen, I'm gonna start with you and to see what you thought of the advisory committee, if you thought there was a good input, good conversation, and if you could generally agree with what the outcome was.
Um, yeah, I, I really found our response team, what are we calling it again, Jeff? I forgot already.
COVID Advisory Committee.
COVID Advisory. I thought it was just a, a good spread of people per se. I really liked all of the different input. And, you know, what I found valuable is when we went around at the end of our meeting, kind of giving our own input. And so I just felt like there were all voices heard and so I, I do, I do like this process. You're kind of asking me a little bit on the spot, million dollar question, and I find ironic that I've had to go first in a number of these meetings. So I don't know if like my picture is first, Bob, but like. So, yes, I am in agreeance with what the committee decided. You know, we're still kind of putting things into place because the, my biggest piece is that the elementary in scenario one and two, very little different. As all of you know, very little difference between the two. One, we are held to, you know, more strict requirements with the six-foot social distancing in scenario two, but I have to be honest with you that I don't, because of how fluid this could be and this situation could be, I anticipate doing our very best to adhere to our scenario two guidelines while in scenario one. I don't want classrooms changing drastically for students, what that looks like, you know, you know, whether or not we're pushing the three feet between them and the six feet. I really want to just get to that six feet kind of guideline and try to stick with that. And I think Jeff agrees with me on that. And, you know, as far as what other things we're gonna be doing in person in scenario one that would transpire, you know, scenario two is just making sure those kids are doing our best and the teachers are doing the best to do the six-foot radius. So I would like to be able to start that. It's, the, the way I see it is whatever I can do in scenario when one potentially could lengthen the time that we're in person to begin with. So I think it's important to be as cautious as we can be.
Board members, what questions might you have for Jen?
I've had some people reach out to me and maybe this is kind of jumping ahead, but in terms of maintaining the same opening and dismissal times, how we're gonna manage getting kids in and out of the building if they're all coming and going at the same time while still maintaining appropriate distance?
Yeah, you know, I've talked with a lot of principals over the last week in regards to this very similar question. And I don't know if I have the official answer for that, Anna. One thing I would like to propose that I'm working and we'll talk with the cabinet tomorrow in regards to it, is I would like to designate an exterior door per grade level. The students are gonna be at recess for that grade level, in the cafeteria with that grade level, and I would really like them to see them use the same entrance and really limit the flow of the building, if that makes sense. So I see, I see that being a big benefit that kids have that one opening, that's where they're gonna find their teachers into the building and it's not a fifth grader or a first grader coming into that main entrance, all kind of clogging that area and then crisscrossing paths. So obviously, this is gonna be a little bit of a work in progress and still lots to be determined and decided before school starts.
And we're still sticking to the plan of having an entire grade together for lunch in the cafeteria?
We are getting donations of tables to allow for that social distancing to happen at lunch. So as it stands right now in scenario one, yes. Now, could that change before the first day of school? I guess, yes, it can. I'm working with Dave Peterson and we are gonna be mocking up those cafeterias and the gym with the tables to see, you know, just how, what that looks like for kids.
Okay, other questions?
Jen, it's Bill. One suggestion that we had, and I'm not sure where you're at with it, is, you know, as far as comfort level for parents and teachers to supply pictures of your rooms.
Yeah.
You said you had a room ready and you were gonna post them online.
Yeah, you know, what I wanted to do is, I didn't want to give a one-picture snapshot, Bill, like here's what the classroom looks like because all of my classrooms have different furniture in there and whether it's tables, whether it's larger desk, smaller desk. I mean, I can certainly throw on the PTO Facebook one picture, but I, I was hoping to get one per grade level and this is not the teacher contact, contract time. So that's kind of been a slow process. Right now, I have three classrooms, four potentially, that are mocked up. And the idea is I have a, a couple of teachers that have volunteered to make videos. And so it's, it's working with them to come in with some of our Cannon Kids students and show them things that they might see different from the time they step foot in the classroom. While I would love to be able to have a video for you two weeks ago, that's pretty unrealistic.
No, I, I understood that and, and you know, I think it was just more of the, the idea that we're working in that direction and that before school starts, parents and teachers would have some sort of idea of what it's gonna look like.
Yeah, I would love to be able to have that.
Other questions for Jen?
I don't know if this is just for Jen, but I was just wondering, where, where is it looking like with the surveys that went out? Like what kind of numbers are we having of people who are gonna distance learn as opposed to come to when we're, what, what's that looking like so far? Or the bus situation of the trans, opting out of transportation?
Um, I can, I can speak for the elementary as far as numbers, as far as distance learning. I am at 49 students.
So what's, what's the response, what's the response rate been to the forms that went out? Or how many, like, because I, I will be honest, we haven't filled ours out yet because we are undecided. So I'm just curious how many other families are maybe in that same boat of not knowing what they're gonna do?
The links, Anna, the links to the forums go out pretty much every time we send out communication. And every time we do that, the numbers change kind of immediately those days.
Yep.
But there are people adding to both of those forums every day. We went from 50 to 52 students distance learning just today. And I honestly, I haven't looked at the transportation one since like Thursday, but at one point on Thursday, I think it was up to about 700 names that were on that or, you know, individual students. So a family might have, you know, two or three kids on there. So the transportation numbers are looking like there's gonna be a lot of parents that will be transporting kids. But that's, that's without having anybody as of yet go through and take out duplicates because we have several people who filled out the form more than once.
And at what point will you know, for the middle school, high school, at what point will you know where that drawing line is gonna be for separating the AMB group or whatever you want to call them? Because I know there's a, there's some people I know with middle schoolers that have been asking for ride shares or maybe they opted out of the transportation and, and they're looking to do ride shares with someone and they're wondering if they're gonna be in the same alphabet as them, like, when will that information come?
When you guys are, make your decision on whether the middle school, high school's gonna be in, in hybrid, I'm gonna start a communication to parents that'll be sent out tomorrow morning.
Oh, perfect. Thank you.
You know, Tim, as long as you've been plugging into us on this particular topic, why don't you expand and let us know how the advisory committee worked as far as you were concerned?
Yeah, like Jennifer said, I thought it was a really good process. You know, I, I think everybody who was there was pretty open and honest about how they felt about things and we had good discussions about the different scenarios and what it would take to go from one to the other. And, and then in the end, when we all had our opportunity to talk about where we thought the district should start, I think people were pretty honest about, about that. You know, it's a tough, these are tough calls for everybody, you know? Obviously, we want all kids to be back in the building, but we also want to make sure that we've got kids back in the building in a safe manner. And, you know, like I've said before, at the middle school, high school, we have to have kids go from one classroom to another because it's just of the nature of how middle schools and high schools work. So we're gonna have a lot of kids in hallways and I, I feel a lot more comfortable having half of them there at a time passing in the hallways as opposed to having all of them passing. Now, with that being said, we're also gonna be staggering when classes start and stop, you know, so that we don't have as many kids in the hallways. We're really gonna discourage locker youth this year. All those students will be assigned to locker. We're gonna ask kids to carry backpacks this year, which is something that we have not done in the past so that they don't have to spend as much time in the hallway. So, you know, there's, there's lots of pieces that go, that go into this. Right now, Mrs. Hoffman and I are working to try to finish up student schedules so that we can get those posted online because typically, our, our way of getting those out is during, is an open house and we're not gonna have an open house this year. So we're also gonna be asking parents to make sure that they create infinite campus portal accounts so that they and their students can, can find that information online. With that being said, we're also missing out on our, you know, the last few years, we've done a sixth grade orientation day that we're not gonna be able to do this year. And so that's something like Jennifer said, is, you know, there's, there's lots of things on the to-do list. That one's pretty high on my to-do list to get done this week because there are lots of sixth grade parents and students who are anxious about transition into the middle school. So that'll be something that'll be coming out later this week too, a little bit of an orientation type thing. But our sixth grade teachers know that they're gonna need to spend a little bit more time this year with that kind of beginning of the year transition thing that, that's usually taken care of during the summer.
Questions for Tim?
Okay, Tim, I think you were gonna meet with the chief of police and discuss the transportation. Did you make any headway on that?
It's a good thing we met. My idea turned out to be not the best one in the world. So, yeah, you know, I think what we kind of decided to do this year, just to make traffic flow a little bit better and to make sure that we try to avoid having parents and buses cross paths dropping off is in the morning in front of the school, that would be for drop-off for buses only. And I think the plan was to, to do some kind of barricade that we can do at some point to keep cars from going through there. We've asked parents the last couple of years to drop off on the west side of the fieldhouse because they can drop off at door, I believe it's door 13 and 14. And then there's a little circle turnaround back by the maintenance area where they can turn around and, and go back out. So we're asking, that's, that's gonna be the drop-off place for cars this year. We're not gonna let, let students that are being driven be dropped off in front. End of the day, it'd be a little bit different, but again, we're gonna try to avoid having cars pick up students in the front of the building just to try to avoid, you know, the way buses in and out of the, out of the lot as quickly as possible. It's really, in the, in the grand scheme of things, Bill, it's not a whole lot of change from what we've asked parents to do the last few years.
Yeah, I think at one point, there was a little concern about us asking for more drop-offs and how we were gonna regulate that. So I think we're just gonna have to play that by year as it comes.
Right. Yeah.
Other questions for Tim?
Just a quick side note there that we will be communicating the transportation stuff out tomorrow that Tim had just talked about.
Will the FAQ on the website be updated too?
Yeah, we will, we will get it updated as soon as we can get some more information. But are you talking about just the transportation or just more, more questions in general?
All of it.
We've been updating every question. So I guess I'm a little confused.
Like, what do you say, updating every question? Because I'm, I'm looking at it right now and I, I don't, I'm, I don't know. I guess it would be helpful if there was maybe a, a updated on date I guess it would be helpful if there was maybe an updated on date somewhere on there. I know when I did our communications for my employer, all of our COVID communications had a date when it was updated. Just so people would know that there had been changes made.
Sure, we can add a date to the questions when we add them.
So a date to each and every question?
No, I'm just saying updated on somewhere at the bottom of the document. Just so if I look at it tomorrow and I scroll down and it's today's date, I know I've already read the most updated information.
Yeah, I think that's fine. I think we've just got like, I don't know, fifteen people that are adding things to that. And so we just need to make sure that whoever's updating the last date on there. I mean, and obviously, not every question warrants making the FAQ, right? Am I?
No, I know, I mean, it's not my document, so that's not my call to make, but I'm just. I don't know. If that's where we're going to be directing, if that's where we're going to be directing people, I just think it's important that it's as updated as possible. Because I've seen questions asked in multiple Facebook groups. I've had emails sent to me that I've been told people to email the help desk. I know we're trying to gather all of this into one place. And I mean, I didn't go over this super, super carefully. But I know that there were some questions that I'd been asked or that I've asked myself that aren't on this FAQ. So I'm just, I don't know what the process is. I don't know who's involved with it, but I just want to make sure that, you know, we have a clearinghouse for people that if they're not on Facebook or they're not, you know, talking to a lot of people, they can get all the information that they need.
Yeah, and just so you know, for any help desk ticket that comes my way or Tim's way, if it pertains to the parent like they're asking and it, you know, is a one-time question ask or if we feel it would be relevant for everyone else to know, then that would warrant being on the FAQ. But a lot of the parents have questions in specifics to their child that wouldn't warrant me to put that on the FAQ.
Completely understand.
And I did not go through with fine-tooth comb the Facebook site for questions. I tried to get as many as I could on there, but I've just been going through the help desk.
Thank you. All right, Larry and Bill were two attendees on the advisory committee. And I wonder if you have any input for us, Larry?
How did you think? I've got to agree with everybody so far. Yeah, I thought it was a really good diverse group of people from the nurses to teachers to staff. Everybody was there, participated and was very open about everything. I agree with the recommendations that came out of it also, knowing that we have, you know, a few minor, you know, things to button up on and that the situation's fluid. It could change, you know, every couple of weeks as the state puts out its new mandates or the county changes their numbers. So it's just being patient and working through things as they come up.
Quick question about the numbers because that's something that I've been asked. Are we going by Dakota County numbers or Goodie County numbers or a combination of the two?
We use Dakota County numbers as a baseline because we were supposed to. We do have the option if we want to go to more or, I'm sorry, less restrictive. We have to have a consult with our MDH representative and MDE. If we want to go to less or more restrictive, meaning that we want to go further into hybrid toward distance, we just need to let MDE know that.
Okay, so I just wanted to know because I'd been asked if we were following.
I get that with people and sometimes the people writing these plans and laws and stuff need to be more direct in what they're saying. So it probably wouldn't be a far stretch if we wanted to use the Goodie County numbers that we could certainly do that. We just have to have a consult with the committee about the need to stay where we are at with the recommendation.
Bill, you were the other attendee on here. How did you feel everything went?
Yeah, I think Anna's question was a good one because I think, you know, just kind of backing up to how we got to the advisory committee was important. And so, you know, the state put out the guidelines and then, you know, the cabinet put together their plans based upon those guidelines. Coming off of what the states put together. And so Anna's question falls into, you know, Goodie counties are lower than Dakotas. And, you know, so we could have gone that route with the meeting. But I think from the group's perspective, let's go into this and be a little more conservative for this everyone involved, teachers and students and administration. So the conversation really went in the end around all of that. And I thought it was very well put together. I think, you know, the teachers spoke up on some of their concerns, you know, asking good questions on how things were going to work. We found some things that we needed to clarify a little bit more. I got myself hung up on scenario one and scenario two at the elementary school a couple of times because they're basically, for the most part, the same as Jen alluded to with the lunchroom. And so from a safety concern, I think they're really trying to take into account all that we can. And so I thought we had good participation, good questions. And, you know, then going around asking every rep that showed up what their opinion was.
Okay, thank you. We had two educators in the group as well, correct? I think Melissa Beaver was one of them. I see her name on the Zoom meeting. So I don't think she had her mic on before, but maybe we can coax her into that.
I'm here. I added my video.
How did you feel the meeting went for you?
You know, I felt that it went really well. It was a little bit difficult being the only elementary rep, obviously besides Jennifer. But I did feel like I was able to share some concerns just from a teacher's perspective. I guess my biggest concern that I had shared was just the fact that we don't really know, I think, how this will spread with kids. I know they say that it's not going to spread as easily with kids, but I really don't know that we know that for sure just based on the lack of data. I mean, our kids have been home since the middle of March. So I think that is a big concern to me. But I think with all the things that we have in place, the masking, the six-feet social distancing, you know, the fifty percent capacity, all the things that were suggested by MDH. And, you know, I feel express those concerns. And really, in the end, I think we came up with a good plan for us. So that's how I feel.
Good, thank you. Bucky, is Bucky Lindo here? He was an attendee. I didn't see his name on there. So if he happens to join us, we'd certainly like his input as time goes on. We had some community reps as well. Excuse me, Melinda Savelko?
Hi.
As a rep, hi, how are you?
Good.
How did you feel things went as far as being an interested parent and being on the advisory committee? How do you think the process was working as far as you were concerned?
I think the meeting itself went really well. I think that there's a good group of people from all aspects. Being a parent, I have children in both facilities. So I'm thinking about, thinking about that in both perspectives. But as much as I wanted both of my children in school, seeing the high school perspective and knowing how different the schools are set up, I really felt that the scenario two was the best to be able to make that work for those kids. Elementary, as we've all spoke to, the scenario one and two are very similar. So I'm going in on the more cautious side, more towards two. But in as one, I feel like we can ease those kids in a little bit better. And that change, if we were to have to go a little more restrictive, would be less intrusive on those kids. So I thought it went really great and I, you know, I'm hoping that this works out.
Thank you.
Yes.
We had a student rep on here, Kristen Hardl. And I saw Kristen's name on here, so I assumed her to be here. Kristen?
Hi.
Hi. How are you, being the only student in this group of adults? How did you feel? Did you enjoy the process? Do you think you were heard as the only student?
Yeah, for sure. I was really nervous going into it, but yeah, I felt really heard and they listened to all of my somewhat ideas. And I really liked how they listened to my perspective as well. And overall, I really liked the outcome of meeting.
Anything else for us?
I don't think so.
I just, you know, most of the other participants here, they've given their opinions. As the only student in our group, I would just like to know if there's anyone, any board members that have particular questions for the student rep? Young lady, you're off the hook. Thank you. Thank you for your input. Thank you for being a part of the team. Is Joe Coyle on? Okay. Trying to look at my list here and see who maybe I've missed, but I think we got a good cross-section. There was actually eighteen people on there. So it'd be real hard to visit for everyone.
Hey, Bob?
Yes?
Jennifer sent me some pictures that I pulled up here of an earlier conversation of an elementary classroom of what we referred to. I'm going to pop these up. I don't know if Jennifer can speak to these.
Sure.
Here's the mocked-up classrooms.
Yeah, so what I have here is a couple of third-grade classrooms and a fourth-grade classroom. Again, trying to do our best to really just go to handle on the requirements within scenario two and why not just do them for scenario one because I don't want there to be a ton of change for kids. This one that's up right now is a fourth-grade classroom, which I was.
I'm sorry.
One more down, yeah, a little bit longer tables presents kind of a problem. But I know there'll be some fourth graders pretty excited to have some extra space to themselves on those tables to begin with. So, yeah, that is Ms. Schleep's classroom. And then I do have another third-grade classroom, which is the lovely Ms. Hoffman's third-grade classroom. So, yeah, so if it gives you an idea to kind of help visualize, all extra furniture has been taken away. But when I look at those pictures, I still, I still see excited kids to be in there. So. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
I see Pam is here and maybe you're not ready to speak to us, but you're an integral part of all of this, being our nurse. And so I'd just like you to weigh in about upcoming and how this has affected you and whether you still hold that optimism that we are as ready as we can be?
Yes, I think the advisory committee made a good choice in their plan as far as which scenario they picked. I really feel strongly that it's better to be a little more cautious at this point in hopes of keeping everybody in school. Hopefully, we can stay there once we get there. So, yeah, I think we're headed in the right direction. There's a lot to think about right now.
Yes, there certainly is. Okay, any questions for Pam? So at this point in time, I think we have had some resolution motion in second, unless Jeff has anything else for us?
No, just the resolution that outlines what we're recommending to start the school year. And obviously, we do have one more incubation period. The group is meeting again August twenty-eighth. To review to see where the numbers have gone. To have one final look before we start.
That's okay, just set it on the table. So it doesn't, on the kitchen table, it doesn't get broken.
Probably need to call a timeout here while we get somebody's microphone off so we can continue. Sounds good now.
All right, so as I was saying, the committee is going to meet again in August twenty-eighth to review the data. And we will be meeting frequently still after the school begins to review data. And maybe even more if data continues to climb steadily, if not quickly. So this, so that parents understand that August twenty-eighth, there could be another change coming out, which we would of course communicate to you of what that would look like. So. But this is what the committee has recommended for now.
Yeah, Jeff, I think maybe putting it a little more in perspective as far as the numbers getting to a big change is probably not likely. I know you have to kind of put it that way. But, you know, I think in our discussion at the committee meeting, we would have to get to thirty, which would be a dramatic change for Dakota County. But it is like, it is possible, but not likely.
Right, yeah, the position that we are recommending tonight puts us in that area that Bill has talked about, that it wouldn't be the huge change. It would just be a minor change and maybe even just moving into elementary, into hybrid. Yeah.
Yeah, and then that plays into Jen's comment about trying to really do it both directions and have it prepared for that. So.
Yep.
Thank you.
I have, I have one more question that we haven't really touched on, but it was part of the agenda. I don't know if it's related to this or not, but have we had teachers request to be able to teach from a distance? I know that there was language in what came from the governor that it would need to be provided, but it's kind of vague. And I'm wondering if we're going to be able to meet those requests? What we're seeing as far as availability of subs, knowing that a lot of subs are retired teachers and that puts them at high risk, are subs going to be available if we need them? And how will that, how will that work if it's not a long-term sub?
Yeah, we have a meeting with teachers on call this week to discuss what the sub situation looks like and how that should interact with people that will need subs throughout the year for various reasons. Has there, so part of your first question was, has there been teachers that have asked for time off?
Not a time off, but accommodations for not being, not feeling comfortable teaching in the classroom.
Yes, there have been, and we are working with them individually on that.
Okay. Because I feel like we've been talking a lot about keeping students safe and I just want to make sure that we're keeping everybody in the schools in mind, not just the students, but our teachers and our staff and everyone. It's not, it's not, kids are very important, but making sure everyone is having their needs met.
Yes, yep. And if they have accommodations that are needed, we're more than happy to meet them as well if they are, what's being asked for, I guess, in regards to the governor's order to the extent possible. What's being asked for, I guess, in regards to the governor's order to the extent possible.
So right now, we're uh we're looking to approve a resolution that both um spells out. Scenario one and scenario two for the elementary and high school, correct? And then we're also giving the superintendent some authorization after consultation with the chair and notification to the board. To implement a different learning model, essentially if it needs to be done on the fly. Is that? Would that be correct?
Yes.
So I I think what what we should do is uh. First have a motion in a second and we'll walk around to the individual board members and uh get their opinion. Before we vote. So at this point in time, I would like a motion in a second. And again, it doesn't necessarily reflect your view as much as just getting a motion in a second on the floor.
Make a motion.
Motion by Brenda to accept. Or to approve the resolution regarding the adoption of the base learning model for the twenty twenty one school year. Is there a second?
I'll I'll second that.
Yeah, we have a motion in a second on the floor. As we walk through this, none of us, none of us has ever walked this path before, so it's. It's been very difficult, but in particular, it's been difficult for the administration. At at times when the community says, uh we know as a school board member, you're having issues and uh. It must be a very frustrating time for you. It is to a certain degree, but I think the community should understand that we're just a half a step ahead of most of the community members. When it comes to what's been going on. And that means the implementation of the scenarios. Uh the options that have been out in front of us. And uh. Where the superintendent and his administrative staff wants us to go based on their recommendations. We have eleven to twelve hundred students in here. And it's been very difficult, I'm sure, for admin to look at the general big picture of things. While still being concerned about the individual student. And uh so it puts him in a very. Tough position to to have their foot in both camps here of worrying about the the people in general, the students in general, how the staff is feeling. And uh we we shouldn't lose sight of our staff because along with everything else that they do. They have families, so they so again, they're concerned about what's going on with their own personal life as well as their professional life, so. It's important for all of us to understand that, that um. They've been working diligently and single mindedly on giving us a scenario that we can accept. I believe we can accept. And uh hopefully, we'll we can move forward as a community, knowing it's it's. It's very controversial, whatever we decide. All right, I was the opening bell there, so um. I I would like you to weigh in as you as you see fit here, cause I think every board member should at least have an opinion on this.
So Jeff, this is Larry. On that section two, do we need to add some wording of COVID advisory committee? You know, with that.
Sure, we can have the superintendent in consultation with the COVID advisory committee. We can certainly add that. This was just a model um resolution from MSBA that came out.
Other than that, I I agree with Bob. I think this is we if we need to move, we need to be able to move fluidly and quickly to change scenarios. So I agree with this.
Others? Brenda, I'm gonna pick on you.
Yep. Well, I'd just like to say I really appreciate all the uh time and thought that's been put into this to try to do the best thing for. Everyone. It's a really uncertain time and nobody knows exactly how it's gonna go, but now we're trying to do the best thing for everyone. I I don't, I guess I'm not clear. Why are we are going with scenario one for um. Elementary and scenario two for high school, or if there if it's so similar for K five, why? Why don't we just go scenario two for both? Let's just. What's the main difference? Just the the social distancing or the?
In the safe learning plan, um there was, the the governor told us to come up with three different scenarios, but actually in the safe learning plan that came out in July, they had five. Different scenarios attached to um data points for what would be data points for each county. The the committee had a look at that and so. Uh initially, it it felt. Proper from, I guess, and anybody in the committee can speak up if I'm out of line here. But they landed on the hybrid for the middle school, high school and the elementary for the in person. Uh as as that's where the numbers pointed to at that specific time. And and really, some of it is almost just wanting to dip our toes into this instead of going headfirst in for, you know, all in person for both. But if you go hybrid right out of the gate, we wanna make sure that we have the hybrid nailed down for sure. And so having that in person feel, which is um by the data, it showed, yeah, we could certainly do the in person in the elementary. Instead of going more restrictive for the hybrid. Because sometimes when you throw a plan together, not everything works out exactly right the first time. So. Doesn't say that we won't be there before school starts. Um the data could point that way and the committee could agree. But at this point, that's what the committee was looking at.
So for the ele- the elementary scenario two is just more restrictive with some of the social distancing and. That sort of thing. It's the same schedule, basically.
Yep, and it's the enforced social distancing with the six feet pieces to it.
Okay.
Yeah, Brenda, I think the the thing that caught me by surprise in the scenario one and scenario two is that. We have the ability to do fifty percent in the building. And I think that's the key part that really separated the two. And so when you look at it, that that's kind of what the determinant factor was, so.
Even with scenario one, we're still under the fifty percent capacity in the classrooms.
Yeah, right.
Okay. Well, Anna, this is a good plan.
I mean, I guess I already mentioned that we're still undecided. I have a rising third grader and a rising sixth grader. So we'll be dealing with the two different schedules. Um we've been very because of. Family members um that are important to us to see and spend time with. We have been very. Restricted. We've kept to a very tight bubble. Um my husband and I are both fortunate enough to have the opportunity to work from home. Um so I but we're still not sure because we we feel like the in person environment is important for both of our kids for their. Social and emotional. Development. Um I think the the hardest part, and this isn't, this isn't our district's issue. It's it's not our admin. I mean, we're we're being pushed into a situation that. We shouldn't have to be making these decisions. That this is above all of us as far as our pay grade is concerned. I think the hardest part is it feels like we're having to make as parents make a decision. Without having all of the relevant and necessary information to make a good decision. And that's it's just because it's not there. It's not because it's not being provided to us. It's because. Some of these questions just can't be answered. Um. I think it's important that we provide options for families that have a different level of risk tolerance than our family might. Or have different needs. So I I feel like this plan accomplishes that. Um. I'd personally like to know more about how, um not just for our family, but in general, how distance learning is gonna be deployed, what that's gonna look like. I know a lot of that is still being decided, but it's hard to know if it's gonna be the right choice when we don't know anything about it. Um beyond that, it will be different than it was in the spring. So ultimately, I I I think it's just, it's really. This is, it it's hard to know what to do for other families when I'm not really sure what I is gonna be best for my own. There's I have a lot more questions now than I do answers and that's that's a. As a parent and as a person, that's not a place I like to be in.
Yep. Thank you. Katie?
Um after after just talking with a bunch of um people and hearing what the what you guys have talked about. At first, I was hoping that the middle or the middle school, high school would be in person as well as elementary. Um. But now hearing with the, you know, it makes complete sense with the higher class numbers, the higher, the the hallways and everything. I I'm in agreement with what we are proposing here and um and I think it's very necessary that we continue to have that option. For families to distance learn, um if that's their comfort level and um. And and such, but I think that I think a lot of time and effort has gone into all of these scenarios and plans. And um I think it's worth a shot and that's just where um I'm sitting with the whole thing.
Okay, board, you've all weighed in on this and uh thank you for the discussion. So we have a motion and a second on the floor. To approve the resolution regarding the adoption of base learning model for the twenty twenty one school year. And other COVID related matters. If you vote yes to this, it it's with the understanding that um we will be adding the COVID advisory committee sentence that. Larry encouraged and we all agree with, I'm sure. So a yes vote. Would be for approval of the resolution. Katie? Do your thing.
All right, do I have, do I read the entire thing or do I go down to be it resolved after the title?
You know, Katie, um MSBA did say that they advised reading the entire.
All right, here we go. Resolution regarding the adoption of base learning model for the twenty 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 one school year and other COVID nineteen related matters. Whereas Minnesota statute section one, two, three, B dot zero nine vests the care, management and control of independent districts in the school board. And whereas the superintendent of independent school district two, five, two. Here and after the superintendent is responsible for the management of the schools, the administration of all school district policies and is directly accountable to the school board. And whereas when responsibilities are not specifically prescribed nor school district policy applicable. The superintendent shall use personal and professional judgment. Subject to review by the school board pursuant to the school district policy three oh two superintendent. Whereas on March thirteenth, twenty twenty, Minnesota Governor Tim Walz. Issued emergency executive order twenty. Zero one, which declared a peacetime emergency in Minnesota in response to the COVID nineteen pandemic. And whereas on July thirtieth, twenty twenty, Minnesota Governor Tim Walz issued emergency executive order twenty eighty two. And the safe learning plan for twenty twenty, twenty twenty one. Which is set forth five learning models, in person learning for all, in person learning for elementary students and hybrid learning for secondary students. Hybrid learning for all students, hybrid learning for elementary students and distance learning for secondary students and distance learning. And authorize all school districts in the state of Minnesota to select and implement an age, an appropriate base learning model in accordance with and subject to the safe learning plan. And whereas the Minnesota Department of Education has issued and may continue to issue written guidance for Minnesota schools on educational issues related to COVID nineteen. And whereas the Minnesota Department of Health. Has issued and may continue to issue written guidance for Minnesota schools on public health issues related to COVID nineteen. And whereas the superintendent and administration of the school district have conferred with the school board regarding the available learning models. The current M D E and M D H requirements for each and other relevant information. And whereas based on the collective consideration of these factors, the superintendent has recommended to the school board. That the hybrid option will be the base learning model to be implemented. At the commencement of the twenty 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 one school year. Now there be it resolved by the school board of independent school district two, five, two as follows. Section one, the superintendent is hereby directed to implement the following base learning model to open the twenty 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 one school year. Elementary will be in scenario one, in person, and M S H S will be in scenario two, hybrid. Section two, the superintendent is hereby authorized after consultation with the board chair and notification to the school board. To select and implement a different learning model for the school district or any specific school buildings with without school board action if the superintendent reasonably believes that prompt. Implementation of a different learning model is necessary. And that constraints of time of and public health considerations render it impractical to hold a school board meeting to approve the implementation. The learning model. The learning model selected and implemented by the superintendent shall continue in effect unless. And until the school board in consultation with the superintendent and appropriate school district staff and public health officials deems. It in the best interest of the school district and its students to implement a different learning model. Section three, the superintendent will approve regular updates to the school board regarding the school district's efforts to implement COVID nineteen related educational and public health guidance issued by the M D E and M D H respectively. All right, so we're we're voting on this and we'll start with Bob.
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Katie, yes. Bill?
Yes.
And Larry?
Yes.
Katie, thank you. It was a long and taxing. Okay, moving forward. Thanks to everyone. Thanks for all the work on this and uh. As Anna so eloquently put it, at at we have to uh think of our families, cause that's. That's what it's all about. But again, you think on terms of all the other people in our community, so. Moving forward, consideration to approve the revised twenty twenty one school calendar.
Uh this item, uh there is actually a parent that brought this idea forward about PLCs and so. We took it and ran with it and we would like to for this coming year, move our PLC meetings from Wednesdays to Fridays. For the most part, and then the the way this program works is that was hard to do strike throughs with that template and then put the new ones in. And so what we did is we listed out. The different PLCs that we are requesting to move to different dates. One addition to this agenda item, and I don't know if it's an addition, but more information, I guess, is that uh Tim Hodges had brought forth also. A needed change for the way that we run our block system that very first week of school. And so I'm asking the board to consider this this week. If it's too short of notice, we can certainly put it on for next Monday's meeting, but I would ask that you consider it at least tonight so that parents are aware of it. That first week of the high school classes, and I don't know if Tim, if you wanna go into what you were thinking on this, so I don't stumble over that. Request.
Sure, I'll try not to stumble over it. Um basically, since uh we're gonna have half of our students. Distance learning at any one time. We don't wanna go a full week without having students be able to pick up books and computers and everything they need. To be able to rip, to be able to do that distance learning. So what I'm asking this first four day week is on Tuesday, the eighth. We'll have cohort number one will be in school. Uh for the day and we'll run both our red day and black day schedule. So essentially, they'll have eight periods during that day. They'll be able to pick up all of their class materials. Uh they'll be able to get their Chromebooks um and to do all that kind of stuff. Then on Wednesday, um the ninth, um the custodians will clean classrooms. On Thursday, the tenth, cohort two will be in school to and will do the same um. Modified schedule where kids will pick up all their materials. And then Friday will be a distance learning day. And then on Monday, the fourteenth, we'll start our first. Day of our what our schedule will be will be while we're in um the hybrid scenario. So my other thought is that um on those two distance learning days during that week. Um staff can put together kind of some virtual open house type materials. To be and be available for parents and students to, you know. um, to be, and be available for parents and students that, uh, you know, if they want to talk about what their classes look like and all that kind of uh, stuff, that, uh, they can be available, um, during those times, um, to answer those questions since we're not going to have a, an open house like we normally do.
Questions?
And Tim, you would send this out, uh, in detail as well with the, the high school communication that would go out?
Correct.
Okay.
So this isn't on our agenda right now. You're asking us to consider it and possibly approve it this evening if we're ready to approve it, correct?
Yes.
Correct. Um, that way tomorrow, when I send my communication out to parents, I can just make this a part of that and get it out, um, to parents as early as possible.
Board members, what do you think about this? Is there any reason why we can't add it to the, um, the agenda under the, uh, school calendar?
I'll, I'll jump in here. I, I think this is a result of some of the conversation, uh, from the advisory committee and the, the idea that, uh, if you didn't modify it, uh, you'd have cohort two a whole week without any textbooks or communications. So I, it's a necessary move for us.
I think it looks great. I think that it would be great to get the kids in there because they're all anxious to get back to school and, and to see what it's going to look like. I think it, I think it's a great way to accomplish that and in the weird times we're living in right now.
Anyone else have an opinion?
I think we should go ahead and add it to the agenda. Load on it.
Okay. So we need, uh, we need a motion to consider to approve the revised school calendar, which, uh, includes the PLC days and the addition of the schedule for the middle school, high school as shown, uh, on, on the screen.
I'll make the motion.
Larry? On the motion?
I'll second.
Second by Katie. Other discussion. A yes vote would be to approve the PLC change days and to approve the schedule that is shown on the screen right now. Larry?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Bob? Yes, that passes by a six-zero vote. Consideration to approve the 2021 high school league changes. We'll hand that to Reed. I'm sure you're here.
Leave everybody, uh, just a few things just to touch on. Fall sports started today for cross-country, girls soccer, boys soccer and tennis. Um, numbers, just the ballpark in regards to our registrations as of this morning. Cross-country at eighteen, tennis twenty-four, girls soccer twenty-two, boys soccer forty-nine. That's grade seven through twelve, and then with the exception of sixth graders included for, um, cross-country and tennis. Another piece, football and volleyball, as you've heard, I'm sure, were moved to the spring. We haven't given exact dates as of yet, but the timeline is somewhere in that. March fifteenth to May fifteenth. March is going to be obviously difficult um, for the football, uh, for outdoors as well, uh, even more so up north, all over the state, uh, depending on what type of early spring we have. We have not gotten an official start date yet or end date for that season as well. Same thing with, uh, the ripple effect of that was moving our traditional spring sports of uh, baseball, softball, track and golf back to a summer season. Um, so, and, and again, the speculation is that's going to be somewhere end of May, June and July type. Um, so again, no hard dates yet for the start and the stoppage of that. Uh, and really what any postseason for any of our programming is going to look like. We've had some talks with the city last week. I don't recall the date. Jeff and Bucky and Dan and I went down to the city and visited with their, Jeff, what?
Finance.
Finance committee, thank you. Just to let them know about the change for football and what that meant in regards to John Birch hosting um, at that time and especially with baseball season and all the uses that goes along with that, butting up right after that. Um, so we're going to tomorrow night, city council meeting to see what really they decide. Jeff, anything you want to add to that?
No, um, basically we shared our information with them that we had at the time and whether the finance committee was the right avenue to get on there. Uh, it, it was a way to get on, at least going through that committee to get onto the agenda for tomorrow night to have them give us, um, an answer on whether they would allow us to play on John Birch, uh, this coming spring. Uh, the hope is that they do, obviously with the frost coming out of the ground, that could, could be a potential mess. Uh, but we are looking at different options, uh, if that is not allowed at, at this time. And we'd have to give you further information on those options as we go along, kind of a one step at a time here, uh, starting tomorrow night. We'll probably have more to share next week at our regular meeting.
Yeah, and obviously if, if the city comes back with a no, uh, that looks, uh, that leaves us to look for a facility to play in, preferably someplace that has turd, uh, guidance recommendations. Not many folks are accepting facility rentals or visitors at this time. So that could play into effect. Uh, if they say no to John Birch, an option that would be not popular could be we play all road games. Or we would try to do something to, um, the field on campus, um, in regards to maybe creating a safer environment since it's strictly, I would say mostly weeds. But again, based off of what is decided tomorrow night will, um, push us into a direction that we need. And I think obviously there's going to be a reduction, we would anticipate, um, to probably six games, most likely three varsity. So if we can come up with a compromise with the city where they allow us and maybe we just play three varsity regular season games um, and any postseason, if there's any postseason, what that looks like, if we could play there. And that means all other games are, are elsewhere. That would be a good compromise. Fall practice season. High school league came up with that. There was some discussion whether that was going to become a practice season or a waiver. Um, I would have preferred that they would have gone to a waiver just for, to make things a little bit cleaner and easier, less confusing. Um, however, I understand why they went to this season instead of the waiver, uh, especially in regards to protection, our, our kids, if anything were to happen during a high school activity. Um, those fall practice seasons provide our football and our volleyball folks, uh, programming opportunity for twelve dates, um, and that is during that September fourteenth to October third window. So they get twelve days during that three-week time and the spring sports, your baseball, softball, track and golf will have the second session in of October fifth to October twenty-fourth. And yes, it would have been the, uh, all of the outdoor folks didn't get the earlier session rather than the volleyball and football having the later session. I don't know. I wish that they would have chosen that. So that is that part. Been kicking around how we're going to run this. I'm going to finalize hopefully some plans and have some discussion with those six head coaches um, tomorrow and look to send something out, uh, because there will be a registration. Uh, but I want to provide families with some flexibility with the fees, especially with the back-to-back three-week windows there, especially if, if Reed is a football player and a baseball player. I don't want our parents to have to come up with, uh, our fees right away, back-to-back seasons. Uh, so we will not charge for the fall season. But we'll provide that flexibility if the, if the parents want to pay, and this is again, this is all what I'm just going through right now. That if they want to, for budgetary reasons, maybe pay, register and pay now or pay later, whatever that looks like for that spring season, uh, especially if they have multiple, um, participants in their household, uh, just to give them that flexibility that I think will be really important at this time. Questions you have for me?
A lot going on. I don't know about questions, but there's a lot going on.
A lot going on. Um, lastly, we're at outdoors, we're at a, I think Bill had asked this at the last meeting. There's a twenty-five percent or two hundred and fifty max capacity for our outdoor programming. Um, so we've taken a look at that. Uh, we're going to do some signage to prevent that. So when we have our soccer home matches, uh, we're going to play, especially since we don't have obviously lights. Um, varsity is going to play at four thirty on field one. And we're going to use field two because we need to separate the teams and the spectators. So we're going to have the teams on, on field one behind elementary, which is the closest one to the elementary, closest to that woods. We'll have the teams be on that, uh, west side. And we're not going to have anybody play on field two so that we can spread out, um, those fans on field two. So we'll put some lines, paint some lines down and put some signage of no spectators past this point, social distance, et cetera. And then, uh, junior high will play up top on field three. And our teams again will be on the west side before they go down the hill. And the fans will be on the side where they can park their car. Um, so we're going to look at, uh, adding a porta potty out there. We're going to add a second porta potty to the tennis courts. And we'll have the fans for the, uh, be around the perimeter. And then we'll have our teams be in that, in that middle on that concrete area. And some signage will go up there as well, just so we can have that separation and, and, uh, spreading out. So. A lot going on. You're right.
Lot going on. So as far as we're concerned as a board, thank you for bringing us up to date on all of this. But what we're particularly approving tonight is the changes, uh, the Minnesota High School League, the recommendations slash directives for district two fifty-two.
I don't know if it's necessarily approving them or not. We put this in for, or put this item in here in case we needed to have that in here because things were changing so quickly at the last, last part of last week. I don't know if we have anything for you to approve tonight. We might have something for you to approve next week, but depending on what we have uh, here tomorrow night at our city council meeting.
So it, more or less a discussion item at this point.
It's more of an update, informative piece as of right now.
By next week, Reed will have a better handle on, uh, our association with John Birch Park, I'm guessing, huh?
He will have all the answers to the state high school. That is his job for next.
Yep. Congratulations for that. Any questions for Reed before we move on? Okay, consideration to approve a list of twenty twenty-one student fundraisers.
Each year, uh, the board asks, uh, administration to bring forward a list of fundraisers. At, at this point, we are asking the board to approve just the fall fundraisers. And, um, we have told people, uh, groups, I should say, to not plan on having any, I don't know if the proper terminology is, uh, goods for sale.
Door-to-door food perish.
Yes, door-to-door stuff. That would cause a lot of safety issues, I guess, not only for the people receiving them, but also for our kids and coaches as well, um, or advisors. And so we are looking more for service-type, fundraisers, if you will. And so we're giving some of the, the, the winner and the, in the spring advisors more time to figure that out and what that looks like, so.
So the list that I had, um, to go off of was the, uh, by the, from the seventeen, eighteen school year. So I had sent an email out to all the head coaches and those advisors. Uh, you know, just basically saying, uh, obviously a lot going on, not sure the direction we can go. We want to stay away from door-to-door and food sale or, uh, food perishable. So, um, we'll be putting some things here. So I want by this and create a new master list. And, uh, so I'll try to go seasonal, um, for you so that not every week or every board meeting, you're approving a new fundraising item. Okay, that'll be my goal. Um, tennis was looking to do something in regards to, uh, a bake sale, but I think that was with the community. So I think if that happens, then that would fall into place. But right now, there's just a lot of unknown, a lot of uncertainty, what they can do, what they want to do, if they want to do much of anything. So I want the kind of, if it didn't pertain to them, um, to add as necessary.
Okay, so at this point in time, there's, there's two coaches that have submitted their, their list or their request. The other two haven't. So are we just, uh, you want us to approve all four of them, knowing what the parameters of each are, no food items and that's such like?
I think that would be best, yes. I think that would be best.
Um, questions for Reed or Jeff concerning this? If not, I would look for a motion to approve the twenty twenty-one student fundraisers.
I'll make the motion. Anna?
Anna, thank you. Second?
I'll second.
Second by Katie. Other discussion. A yes vote would be to approve the twenty-one, twenty twenty-one student fundraisers as shown. Bob, yes. Brenda?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Katie, that passes by a six-zero vote. Consideration to waive the parking fees for twenty twenty-one.
This idea came up actually from our COVID advisory committee meeting and hopefully I, it's okay to use Crescent, uh, Crescent's name, but she brought this up actually, and I thought it was a great idea and so did the committee. And so we would like to ask the board to waive the parking fees, uh, for the high school students that have traditionally been a part of the fee structure here for this coming year to help encourage more kids to drive in to help our transportation, uh, piece, if you will. And so we're asking the board to drop the parking fees for this coming year.
What do the parking fees generally pay for? Is there a, oh, short shortage that we're going to have to make up somewhere?
Uh, Josh, are they tied in specifically? I guess I don't know. I thought I saw Josh come in.
Yep. Uh, so not tied specifically to anything. We generally would, um, go to help offset some of the maintenance items for the parking lot. We had seal code it, uh, summer ago. Uh, there would be line striping, sweeping, all sorts of things. A lot of that stuff we do in-house and there's not a cost that goes out. Uh, a lot of the things, quite honestly, um, the parking fee is just a minimal portion of what the cost is to have a job like striping or resurfacing done, but it does help to offset a little bit of that and, uh, make the, uh, student or family responsible of having that, uh, the, the spot of the, the parking lot. So, uh, ties specifically to anything, not necessarily as the general fund item. Um, but there are plenty of maintenance items in the parking lot that those dollars can be set for.
Just curious. Thanks.
Any other questions in regard to this? If not, I would look for a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Brenda's making a motion to approve waiving the parking fees for twenty twenty-one, right?
I'll second. This is Anna.
Okay, and it's seconded by Anna. Other discussion. A yes vote would to, would be to approve the waving. Larry?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Bob, yes. Six-zero vote that passes. Consideration to approve the MSBA model policy eight oh eight COVID-19 face covering policy.
This is the first reading of the model policy, uh, that MSBA just sent out to us last week for the COVID-19 face covering in, uh, compliance. In, uh, compliance with Governor Walz's executive order. Um, it takes into account all of the items of the executive order if you've, uh, read through this. Again, this is a first reading tonight. Second reading would take place next week prior to school starting.
So before it implements in our district, we will get another opportunity to discuss this in depth if we find a, a reason to. To do so, right?
Yes, yep, it'll be next Monday.
Okay. Pretty extensive. Anyone, uh, offer an opinion or have any, uh, anything to add to this?
Jeff, is this something we should make, kind of like the other item we approved tonight where the advisory board and you can make updates and changes to it? If the governor so chooses to mandate a certain face covering, not valid anymore?
Yeah, we can certainly, um. This was ran through our policy committee, um, or given out to our policy committee for, for comments on, I guess. Prior to tonight, and I don't know if, uh, is it, Bill, are you on the policy committee or who's all on the policy?
Yeah, I'm on it. I, and I was going to have you scroll back to this definition. I, I think, you know. What we're really following is a lot of the science and that, that's coming from the Minnesota Department of Health and. You know, and, and the CDC. And so, you know, I, I would venture to guess that, uh, some of that information. Is going to reflect in the definition of a, of a proper face covering. So I, I would agree with you, Larry, that. We do need to have some ability to review it going forward.
Yeah.
You know, the point.
Because it was the day after the policy came out that one of them is in question now.
Right, right. And so, yeah, I mean, the policy is being put in place for the purposes of. Uh, our plan also. So I think it's important that we, we have something to reflect back on.
So we will get another reading next week for anybody that hasn't reviewed this in depth and would like more questions answered. They will have that opportunity at the second reading.
So, so if Larry, just so that I understand how things have, have worked or whatever, if there was a change, that change would come at the second. Or any not necessarily tonight, but at least the ideas would be broached tonight.
Yeah, that's right. I'm good with the policy. I just want to be able to update that policy as fast as we need to when we get. A new executive order or something like that that comes through.
Sounds good.
So I guess what it probably have to be is, uh, a reference to any updates that come from. MSBA, because, because we're following MSBA's model.
Right.
And so if they make a modification, it, would we have to do first and second reading, I guess, would be the question.
We can either follow up with MSBA on that. Uh, obviously board sets policy and so.
Right.
Without it, you know, i- in the resolution, this is a policy versus a resolution. And so I, I'm trying to find down here under implementation, um. You know, we could certainly treat it as any other policy that may change throughout the year for various reasons. Of just the notification to the board that MSBA has changed their policy and then we could put it on the board for that. For that meeting.
For that meeting is an update then.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We could do it that way. We, we could call MSBA and see if there is, um, some language around that we could add to our policy or craft some. That, that looks reasonable and run it past them. That kind of follows along with what Larry's asking.
Yeah, I don't want to speak for you, Larry, but I think that's what you're referring to.
Yep. Okay, um, so we can approve it this evening, at least the first reading. And move forward to, uh. Either a more complete document or. Changes that need to be made. Uh, consideration to prove the MSBA model policy eight oh eight. I would look for a motion to approve the first reading.
I'll move to approval.
Motion by Bill, second.
I'll second.
Brenda on the second. Other discussion. A yes vote would be to approve model policy eight oh eight. Larry?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Bob, yes. That passes by a six zero vote. We didn't approve any, uh, additions to the agenda, so we are now at a, uh, an adjournment time. Um, again. It's been hard on everyone to get to the point where we are today. It's been especially hard for our staff people and we owe them a. A debt of gratitude for all the work they've put in and that goes across the board from department heads to our EA. To our paras, to our custodians have all put in a lot of work and, uh. We acknowledge that work and thank you for it. So with that, I would look for a motion to adjourn. One of the hardest motions that we.
Make the motion. That's Anna.
Anna, thank you. A second? Katie on the second? Any other discussion? All in favor of adjournment, say aye. Aye, wait. I did such a good job leaving up here. Bob says yes. Brenda?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
That passes by a six zero vote. We are adjourned. Thank you for your participation.
Bye-bye.